All right, we call this special meeting of the Holiday Island City Planning Commission to order. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Constitution of the Constitution. One night under God, in this oath of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Elway.
Abbot.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Coon.
Abbot.
Abbot.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Pittman.
Here.
Jumis.
Here.
And Mr. Keys.
Here.
We have a forum.
We have a forum. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that. Ken, uh, Linda made a motion to approve the agenda. Ken, second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 The agenda is approved. Lynn distributed meeting minutes from August eighth. Uh, the public hearing and August eighth, the regular meeting and August fifteenth, special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes? Linda, second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Minutes are approved. Uh, we have no reports, no standing committees, no special committees tonight, no hold at this. The purpose of this new, of this special meeting is to swear in our new commissioners. So if, uh, Susan Childers, Don House, Randy Ruff, Ralph, Ralph, sorry, and Doug Smith would, uh, come forward here.
How will you agree to this, love?
Oh, you're gonna squeeze sheets?
No.
This is something you have to sign, Don.
Oh, this is to sign.
But.
I am hoping to.
You can hand to it until your sworn hand. Okay. Raise your right hand. I'm gonna say aye and then you state your name. Aye.
Aye, Susan Childers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Arkansas.
And the state of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Sworn and subscribed before me on this twelfth day of September twenty twenty-three. You are now duly sworn in. And, uh, might as well go ahead and sign those right away. You know, I got a pen.
Here's a couple more. Doug?
I, uh, let me be the first to say that I really appreciate, or we really appreciate you guys, uh, you know, stepping forward and taking this on. A lot of people don't understand how important this is to have planning and zoning control in the city. And now you may, I will excuse the, uh.
Folks, you get to sit up here.
Yep, you get the.
You're not gonna pause the meeting yet?
No, we have more business that you're gonna help run.
Yep. You are now sworn in. You are the, now the commissioners.
So it's a continuation?
Yes, this is a continuation of the special meeting.
Our special meeting has a couple things to do. Okay.
So have a seat. We don't have Nick, but she's there.
Somewhere. It's quite all right.
But you can be anybody tonight. I'm going to.
Thank you, Ken, for coming.
I'm going to continue to conduct until such time as the, uh, as the officers are elected. So, uh, we'll need a chair, a vice chair and a secretary. So, uh, let me, and these will be voted on by the commissioners. So, uh, I'll open the nominations for chair of the planning commission.
Yeah, we'd like to nominate Don House.
I'll move that the nominations close.
I think if you're willing.
All right, Don has been nominated and Lynn has moved that the, um, that the nominations be closed. Uh, do I have a second on closing nominations?
Make a second. Second of motion.
Do I, all in favor of closing the, the, uh, the solicitation of nominations?
The nominations.
Almost acclamation.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Then you're elected by acclamation, is what they say. No need to vote. All right, now I'll open the, uh, floor to, um, nominations for vice chair.
Aye.
Doug? Are you gonna make your motion?
I, I move that we close the nominations.
Okay. Doug Smith has been nominated. We have a motion to, to close the nominations. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Doug. Now we need nominations for secretary.
We all nominate Lynn to be secretary.
Okay.
And I'll move that nominations be closed. Uh, do I have a second on closing nominations? All right, all in favor, say aye. All right. Name of the secretary. At this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over with a new chair because I am no longer a member of the planning commission. And at this point, your job will be to, uh, ask for public comments, commissioner's comments. And then both meeting. Do you have a copy of the agenda?
No.
Lynn, do you do that first?
Yes, I think we should.
Well, then I'm gonna turn it over to you for.
Okay. There's a formality for new commissioners that, uh, we have to read the code of conduct that was established by ordinance twenty twenty-one dash three by the city council. It was done back in May of twenty-one. And, uh, in our orientation, if we had a distributed copies and, uh, if you, and all the tests that you read that and understand and agree to it, we have the affirmation form that needs signed. Okay, so I'll start over here. I'll put in the, uh, let's see. The top line is for the chair, for Don. The second is for secretary. Sign that. We don't have a vice chair on here, so that's fine. So you can, otherwise you're just a commissioner. So if he'll sign below my name on the commissioner line, be great. That's all I have for that order of business. So then, um, any public comments? Give me the next bullet on the, on the. Okay.
Rebecca Sherman, Wild Turkey Drive. Welcome to the new planning commission. And here you go. Your first FOI. It's also been sent in an email, but it's been sent to the FOIA address.
Okay, I'll look for that.
Okay. Thought I'd do one in print, too.
Okay. I'll meet you halfway. You all right? She has to sign on the first line. Yes, please. Any other public comments? Okay, new commissioners, do you have a comment?
My only comment would be that I wish I appreciated the fact that you gave us such a good orientation on this whole process.
Okay. Uh, then on scheduling, we have September twelfth at six P M. So that's about fifteen minutes. I'm gonna use that time to, uh, go through the agenda with Don just to help him with, uh, running the, the next meeting we're gonna have. Because we published the meeting at six o'clock, we're gonna have to wait for that before we start, even though we have a, a good audience here. And, uh, so do as you like and then we'll have a record of the meeting following that, uh, public hearing to deliberate on what we hear and maybe take action on a couple of resolutions. So that's all I have other than adjournment. You have a cabinet? Call it adjourned.
This, uh, meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Now you can move over to the, to the chair chair.
Susan, yeah, so starting again. I don't think your mind's on. It's not a non-actual term at all.
Grab my cane.
Welcome to the, uh, September twelfth Holiday Island City Planning Commission Public Meeting. A public hearing. My call is being ordered. We had to pledge allegiance for a while ago, so we're gonna forego that. We're going to pull the roll.
Commissioner Childers.
Here.
Mr. House.
Here.
Mr. Ralph.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Dimas here, all present.
We have a forum. Welcome to public attendees. The purpose of the hearing. Arkansas statutes require that the planning commission give public comments in a public hearing before rezoning permits and changes to zoning regulations can be approved. This public hearing is for those purposes. To hear comments regarding only the following rezoning application and zoning regulations. Documents being considered by the city planning commission for approving and recommending to the city council for adoption. Session one. Session one will be regarding rezoning application RA twenty-three zero eight zero eight filed by Justin Frain requesting a change from C two limited commercial district to C four commercial trades and services district for the property on the west corner of State Line Drive and Valley Drive, AKA one eighty-one State Line Drive, UBL three dash seven dash one. Session two is regarding a additional use application, CUA twenty-three zero eight zero eight filed by Justin Frain requesting that a structure may be built on the property on the west corner of State Line Drive and Valley Drive, AKA one eighty-one State Line Drive, UBL three dash seven dash one to be used for boat, mechanical work and sales. Mr., uh, Commissioner Dimas, would you proceed?
We have some rules. Public hearing will be conducted. Public hearings must be conducted in a fair, orderly manner so as to allow citizen opinion to be expressed directly to the planning commission that is making zoning planning, zoning policy decisions. Individuals wishing to speak shall approach the podium, state their full name and address, and make their comments. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their comments. If multiple individuals have made similar comments on the same item, then the chairman may limit further similar repeating comments. Individuals who submit documents during the hearing shall identify each document. Each document submitted shall be made a part of the official record of the hearing. Documents submitted prior to the public hearing will be provided to the commissioners to be made part of the official record of the hearing. Reading documents in the record are subject to the three-minute time limit. After all comments have been made, the chairman will close the hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, further comment, further public comment on this topic will not be entertained. If the planning commission meeting follows immediately after the closing of the hearing to deliberate on the hearing comments and to consider further action on this topic, no public comments will be accepted on the topic during that meeting. Commissioners may discuss an item and ask questions of the presenters from the public hearing.
At this time, we will begin the public hearing comments. Is Justin Frain present?
I'm here.
Would you care to approach?
Sure.
Do we have a time? Would you like to make any time?
Sure.
Do you have one?
Thank you.
I can use some time.
Yes.
My name is Justin Frain. I'm the one who is requesting the rezoning. I think there's a couple of points I'd like to make. Firstly, it's not just a boat repair shop that I'm, I'm wanting to build. Construction is my main source of income. And so primarily, I want to use the space to house and facilitate my construction business. At the same time, um, the building is big enough to have a woodworking shop and a mechanic shop in it to where I could also work on vehicles and boats. The reason why I'm requesting it the way I am is I'm trying to be upfront about what I'm, what I would like to do. In order for me to be able to go to the auctions and purchase, uh, the state of Arkansas is that I have a business formed for, um, vehicle sales. And then they also require that there's land, um, where that business is formed. So if I want to go to the auction to purchase vehicles, either say for the construction company or a project vehicle to work on, I need to have that business in place to do that. So, uh, you know, just to be clear, I'm not trying to start a, you know, per se, a boat shop. It's more like a, um, a repair shop where I can do repairs on boats. But the business end of it is not, uh, is not to be, um, just boats and cars.
Keep going.
Um, I think that's really all I needed to, to really say and sort of clarify because it doesn't really say that in any of the paperwork that went out. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Please approach.
My name's Steve Williams. I live at one forty Valley Drive.
Who's that? Who's that?
Is it on? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, better. I'm Steve Williams, one forty Valley Drive. Uh, my property lies directly across the street from Mr. Frain's property. And, uh, before I get started, I'd like to let Mr. Frain know that I am not here to try to, uh, do any harm to him. I'm only here looking after the best interest of my family and my neighbors. So, uh, with that in mind, I think Lynn, do you have that queued up?
It's queuing.
Okay, so like, uh, like Mr. Frain, we're looking at a rezoning, um, to one eighty-one State Line Drive.
Steve, you don't have to be that close. There you go.
How about that?
A little further away.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, I've got, I've got a few thoughts on that, on how it's going to affect not only my property but, uh, the property of the neighbors. And, uh, and I'm sure Mr. Frain's intentions are good. That there are some repercussions to what he's planning on doing. And if we can perceive them, um, we've got, uh, we've got some reasons. Uh, this enterprise is not consistent with the surrounding land use. Um, it has the potential to adversely affect the property values of, um, of the surrounding homes and vacant properties as well. Um, it's gonna have an impact on the life that we're used to in this neighborhood. It's very quiet, very peaceful. Uh, it doesn't smell like fiberglass or, and it doesn't sound like Alphabert engines. Uh, all repair, marine repair businesses accumulate boats for one reason or another. I don't expect this to be any different. Uh, I've never seen one that didn't. And, um, those of us that, that chose to buy property here and live here did so based on zoning, which is C two, and my own, my home is sitting on a C two lot. Uh, and, uh, had this enterprise been in existence when we decided to buy, we probably would have passed. So the final, the final point I'd like to make is if this change is made, it could set a precedent in that particular area of Holiday Island that, uh, that could start a contagion of rezonings that would alter the landscape in that area. And, uh, this, uh, this is subject property, uh, directly across the road from my home. This is on Valley Drive. Uh, Mr. Frain has not yet done any excavation or worked on.
Your time is up.
That's it.
That's it.
Can I, would you give me some time? Can I do that?
I'd like to give him my time.
Yes.
Got it loud?
Thank you, Beth. So I'll try to be fast. Um, this is the property from Valley Drive. The next slide, Lynn, is the property from State Line, which has not been opened up yet, obviously. Next slide is, uh, my property across the street from the community church and from Mr. Frain's property. Next slide. Uh, this is Butch Martin's place out on two forty-two. This is pretty typical. Next slide. Uh, this is Phoenix Fiber Glass, South twenty-three, south of Eureka Springs. Next slide, Eagle Rock Boat Repair, Highway eighty-six, Golden, Missouri. Next slide. Uh, this is a thousand-foot buffer around the subject property and it affects a hundred and fifty-nine properties. Next slide. Uh, there's been multiple studies done, uh, about the proximity of boat repair shops to residential neighborhoods on a thousand-foot buffer. In this case, by the National Association of Realtors found that they lost up ten, to ten percent of their value. And, uh, there are about three or four studies, Lynn, um, saying the same thing. Some from University of Arkansas, University of Maryland, if we flip on through. Uh, same thing, thousand feet, you're losing an average ten thousand dollars, negative impacts. Keep going. Uh, University of California, same thing, ten thousand in value loss, uh, within a thousand feet. Go ahead. Uh, Florida Atlantic University, um, same thing, thousand feet. So there's, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of research done on this and it's all pretty homogenous. Uh, next, next slide. Uh, University of Arkansas, same thing. Next slide, Lynn. Uh, here's a buffer of one mile from the subject property and that buffer, uh, indicates that there are seventeen hundred and seventy properties affected. Next slide. There was a study by the University of Maryland found that, uh, homes located within a mile of a boat repair yard had values that were five percent lower than homes located further away. That's seventeen hundred and seventy properties. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. Uh, we have in Holiday Island, not directly in Holiday Island, but, uh, we have Morton Marine, who, which you saw earlier, down on two forty-two. Uh, it is two point four miles from the subject property, according to Google. And, uh, but, uh, Butch has been there for a long time. Uh, he's wanting to retire. He's looking for somebody to take over his business. Um, you know, I don't know if there's anything there that would be an ideal location, uh, for what Mr. Frain is trying to do. And I guess in closing, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of vacant commercial property around that's much better suited, I think, to, to his purposes and, uh, and to our neighborhood and to, uh, to try to maintain our quality of life and, and our property values. So, um, that's, that's about all I've got. And, uh, I appreciate your time and congratulations to the new commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I have one.
I have one as well. It's gonna be, uh, for John Williams. My name is Steven Williams. I'm an attorney in Eureka Springs. John has asked me to be here today. And what I'm here to talk to you about is the ordinances and whether this zoning would actually be consistent with the ordinance, ordinances.
Use the mic.
Is this, well, I'll try and lean in and be, uh, be as loud as possible. But either way, the request is to change this from a C two to a Z four. You can find the definitions of what C two versus C four is. It's section seven oh three, um, of the ordinances. But rather than recite what is in the ordinances there, the best use of time is to go to section seven oh five, which provides a table of what is permitted within a, uh, particular district. If there's a P next to it, then it's a use that is permitted. When there's a C, it is a use, conditionally authorized. And when there is an MP, it is simply not permitted. In regards to what, uh, Mr. Frain is asking for, you're gonna have MPs. He's most closely resembling a vehicle repair shop. That is not permitted in a C two. So then we have to take from the non-permitted usage. He also said construction. That's also not permitted in a C two. So there's a real question of whether this rezoning is a backdoor attempt to get the use permit that would allow him under a C four to take these, uh, to implement and get the zoning requirements that he needs. But this body in this commission has a, um, has various approval criteria that they have to look into whenever looking at approving or denying a rezoning. And in that, you need to be cognizant as we move down from residential and the further we go down in C, uh, two to C four, you're actually creating areas that have more restrictive uses and a downward restriction there. So as they go through, you have to look at, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan and the consistency of the proposal with the, uh, with the purpose of these regulations? C two to C four and then a conditional use permit, that is not consistent. We have protections in place and the character and the stability of these areas is what, uh, contemplated by the, um, the approval criteria. There's a variety of other ones, uh, one being compatible with the purpose and proposal of the zoning usage and character of the surrounding area. C two area has numerous residences nearby. The zoning district information expressly stated that the use is not permitted. Again, I'm gonna point you back to the table at seven point oh five. And then you also have ability of the subject property, which has been restricted without the proposed zoning map table. Without the zoning being permitted, this would be denied even if a conditional use permit was approved by the commission itself. So we got a couple steps that have to be done, but overall, the proposal. Understood. Thank you for your time.
Rebecca, Rebecca Sherman, Wild Turkey Drive. So I do find.
So I do find it's all confusing in this regard. I've been here 40 years. So I always heard when the city came in, I've heard him say a number of times, they would honor the covenants. So now, I also saw the checklist of what is required for Mr. Frame, his first name, I forget. Justin, for what Justin had to present. And there was one thing he ticked off that I couldn't understand why that was given an okay and then asking for $425. And I'm a little confused about Mr. Williams having a C2 on his property because according to the covenants of which Justin presented to the commission board for intake, unit three is a C1. It's a commercial neighborhood. It has requirements. It's listed wherever somebody has this list that shows. There's an example of a home that was done according to, probably was the, why they, they did an amendment and, and had the HI UO UCP group. As far as I know, that's all still in effect. Haven't, I mean, it was presented to this board that it's still in effect. And as in any business, had to be a particular square footage, had to be of the design to be like a home. Had to have the parking. And one of those examples is at the corner of State Line and Thomas West. That's a home that was built so the woman could put her beauty shop in it instead of living in her home up on Dove. Still in effect. You took it in. This part is a document. And considering Jack Hill, former commissioner, and his wife Barbara Hill, who were the people that did the original white paper for Being a City. Barbara Hill's name is who signed on that amendment. They knew what they were all doing. Maybe they thought about how this, this was going to. So I don't know. I don't think it should happen. And I think that gentleman deserves a refund.
It's three minutes.
And I'm done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John Rossen, 24 White River Lane. There's plenty of commercial property out here in this area. How many of y'all would like to live across from a boat repair shop? And that's all, that's all I have to say about it. It's not right. And it's going to really devalue these people's property.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah, I want to get up.
Give me a moment, I'll make it around there. John? Could it be possible for you to put, put that back up with the aerial view of the Williams property right there where the valley makes that curve?
Would you state your name, please?
Huh?
State your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Roger Martin. 148 Valley Drive, uh, next door to the Williams property and adjacent to across the street from this proposed project. Now, that's not the one. There was another picture.
From Steve's presentation?
Yes, from Steve's presentation.
We all see both kinds of looks. Aerial, this, this one with the thousand foot?
No, no, this was a, it just shows only two or three properties right there on the corner where Valley Drive makes that curve.
This picture?
It's a, plus the first and second one, I think, well.
This one?
Yeah.
No, that's close enough. I'm, uh, first, let me tell you, I, I have no whatsoever, if somebody wants to start up a business, especially in Holiday Island, and try to make a living and, uh, and of course add to our tax base, which certainly need, not too many businesses seem to survive here. But, um, this just simply is, is not the right place for this particular type of business. I've been here a long time, well over 20 years. If you look at the cur, corner, the bull nose, Valley Drive curve right there, right there, that's my house, right next to Steve's house. One that looks like a blue roof, it's not, but it looks that way. That's the house, yes, that one there. That's my property. And again, again, I would be directly across from that. I, I just, it would not certainly add anything to, it would help the community, the neighborhood, look any better or prosper any better than it would naturally. And, um, I think this, if you just take advantage of the, uh, properties that are available, commercial properties that are available around here, um, especially some of those on the outskirts of Holiday Island, such as where Morton Marine is, I think it would be a lot better suited for his, his use and, uh, it'd be better for the whole community. But, um, again, we need, we need business here and we need tax revenue. And I just, uh, I'm just concerned that, uh, in a short, very short period of time, if you've seen these other properties, uh, commercial properties, a very short period of time, that whole corner would look the same way. And that would not be good for that neighborhood. Very quiet, peaceful neighborhood right there. And we're not trying to restrict anybody from trying to make a living, but, um, we are concerned that we invest our money here, we grow our property, and we don't want to see it going backwards. Don't want to see it lose any value. That's certainly something we don't need here. And, um, I just, I just wish him the best, but I think he needs to just put it in the appropriate place for it or reduce the best good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah, my name is Rupert Baumgarten. I live in 19 White River Lane. And basically, I guess I'm suppo-, uh, supporting the Holiday Island Community Church. I'm, uh, uh, chairman of the administrative committee for the Holiday Island Committee, Community Church. And I think I can speak for most of our members. I agree with 9% of everything that everybody has already said, so I won't go through everything. But the biggie is reducing the value of properties in the area. It'd end up being a junkyard, which we don't need a junk in that area. Like you said, it was a very, it's a very peaceful area, very clean, very neat, and we want it to remain that way. We don't need all the junk that this would, this would, you know, would give us in that area. I, as, as representing the church and representing myself, like, we just totally disagree with rezoning as for that particular purpose. And there are all kinds of commercial lots around here. I don't know why you can't, one of the existing commercial lots, you know, that have got good access to hi, highways on 23. And why pick this area? I, I don't know. But, uh, that's all I have, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, Rupert. Any other public comments? Yeah, session two. Close that session and we'll open up session two regarding a conditional use application, CU 230808, uh, by Justin Frame requesting that a structure may be built on the property on west corner of State Line Drive, Valley Drive, AKA 181 State Line Drive, UBL 3-7-1, used for boat mechanical and sales. Any other comments regarding that application?
I'm standing up again. My name's Stephen Williams. I'm here for Steve and John Williams. On the issue of the conditional use, um, I touched on it, but it's important to remember that a conditional use by itself is not enough for Mr. Frame to proceed with his business plan. It's analogous to a vehicle repair shop or a construction zone that requires a C4 zoning. So just the conditional use by itself is not going to, uh, carry the day for him. And then on the general gist of conditional uses is that they're tailored so the character and the integrity of the area where the conditional use is permitted. But they're only allowed within the description or within the districts as described by the ordinances. You guys have heard from Mr. Williams and a couple of other folks here today about their concerns about the impact on the community, light, noise, et cetera. A conditional use would not be appropriate within this setting based on the people that live in the community and have reported to you there. And it's important to note the ordinances typically state that a conditional use will not adversely affect the other property in the area it's been lo, uh, been located in. And I'll leave it there for you guys to think on.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Tracy George. I live at 38 K Rock Drive. And, um, Justin stated earlier that this would kind of be off to the side, but it was mainly a construction, uh, is it for like material you see to your storage? Or you're going to be building things there and moving it? Because I see, I see nothing on this condition, on this, uh, form here that says anything of construction. All I see is boat and mechanic shop and sales. So to me, that's a complete, incomplete application. And that will be additional traffic coming in and out. And these, I'll tell you, you do not want loads of lumber coming through these roads and curves any more than you have to, because we're already concerned about our roads and the big trucks that are on it. So therefore, if you're familiar with, I'm sure you are, the size of the trucks that deliver construction materials, that is going to be worse than any trash truck you can imagine. So, and there again, you're going to be looking at a second business on this same property. Where do you draw the line? Is it construction or is it repair and sales? Just my thoughts.
Thank you.
I, I wasn't aware of the conditional one, but, uh, for the same reason, the last one, the conditional one, it's still, you would still have boats, motors, trailers. You'd have all kinds of trash sitting around your building. And it would look like, again, it would lower, lower the, uh, value of the properties. It would destroy the area as far as how, how it looks right now, as far as cleanness and, uh, quiet. So most of everything that I said earlier pertains to this one too. I disagree with this kind of zoning also.
Thank you.
Rebecca Sherman, Wild Turkey. I forgot about the conditional use also. So I'm not sure which one of the forms that don't build out so extensively. When it come, one of those forms, and it might have been the conditional use, I'm sure hoping so, as I talked about security lighting. Well, me and the lovely church had to learn what it means to be no lights, because I called their parking lot the football field because I'm up above it. And when they turned them all on, oh, good Lord, where's the game? And they don't do that anymore. So somewhere in these forms that were submitted, the clarification about light would be one thing. Another is, um, it is, the state line is a emergency 911 road. And, oh, I hear plenty of fire trucks, especially a lot of new used ones that are doing a lot of runs. And they, a lot of responders, you know, that were building that up and they go that way. The other thing is, is all of these C1, 2, 3, and there is no 4. I see created C1, 2, and 3. There is no 4. When you get your assessments, it's residential, C1, 2, 3, and 4. I mean, no 4. And so now, when somebody was talking about the revenue, I don't see that the city gets any revenue out of this just other than the $425 this young man paid to have this hearing. Done.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. We will close this. Public hearing is adjourned. Okay, we're going to begin the Holiday Island City Planning Commission meeting of September 12th, 2023. I call this meeting to order. We've done the pledge of allegiance previously. Let's call the roll. Commissioner Childers?
Here.
Commissioner House?
Here.
Commissioner Ralph?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Dumas here, all present? Thank you. And the forum, if you, uh, move, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion to approve the agenda, stated.
Second. All, all in favor?
I have.
And. So no reports to give at this meeting? Standing committee meetings, special committees, no reports to give? Business, old business, new business?
New business.
New business. Okay, deliberations on the public hearing comments regarding a rezoning application, RA 230808 filed by Justin Frame requesting a change from C2 limited commercial district to C4 commercial trades and services district of the property on the west corner of Valley Drive and State Line Drive, AKA 181 State Line Drive, UBL 3-7-1.
Shall I start?
Please.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you to the audience for, I know this, everybody feels strongly about this and I appreciate the fact that everybody has been so calm about the whole thing, sitting in, and that makes it, we're all new, remember that? We're all new. Although thanks to Lynn, he's given us really good 85-page document on this. We all want new businesses in Holiday Island. We want businesses to succeed. Holiday Island residents to support businesses. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Frame is considered placing a business in our community. However, I, I question moving, uh, from the current zoning status of C2 to C4 simply because of the nature of the community that's around there. They would have a significant negative impact on that area. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I do. And it should, oh, shouldn't, I usually talk so loud, everybody can hear me. Thank you. I, do you want me to rephrase all of that? Thank you.
Randy, next? After hearing all the public comments and the description you've given to Mr. Frame, not going anywhere.
not going in about this woodworking shop till now, then his residential application. And hearing the neighbors around there, including the church. Section one point oh three of the purpose is for protection of property from blight and undue depreciation, which I think this would definitely cause appreciation and probably blight, which would cause property values to go down. I'm not gonna say it.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any comments? Do you have any comments?
Mr. Dumas? I have some prepared comments I've done on the screen. If you want to kind of follow along. What's been pointed out, what we have to use for criteria, there are points A through G there. And I highlighted the consistency with the proposal of the purposes of these regulations. And the purposes listed down below, that will get to it. It has to be compatible with the zoning, the uses and character of the surrounding area. That the extent to which the rezoning will detrimentally affect nearby property, impact on the property value. And the zoning at the time of the purchase, those are of those criteria, those are ones that I think are outstanding for me. The purpose, this comes from our regulations. Regulations are intended to provide the order to growth and development, protection of the character and stability of residential commercial areas of the city. Protection of property from undue depreciation and appropriate use best of, best plan and a good civic design and arrangement. The C two that is currently zoned that we did when we originally put that on there, when we adopted these ordinances and I don't remember the date, but it'll show up. It doesn't fit the character of what is being, what's being proposed today for us to consider. C four is a better fit and that's why I'm sure Justin chose that. And honestly, that came from a conversation when he brought the application, it's the best fit, the only place it may fit. But the purpose of that district in C four is to provide appropriate locations for issues that do not require high public visibility. May have a limited manufacturing or ancillary warehouse and storage requirement. Some uses may have retail storefronts such as lumber, plumbing, electrical supply, vehicle service repair, screened equipment yards, limited manufacturing and small warehousing spaces. It's been talked about tonight for what the C two zones permit, that's currently zoned, what C four does. And the change has some impacts from some that are not permitted to conditional. And in that description of, in his application for doing repairs, I found that it probably best fits the vehicle, equipment and sales as well as the general repair. So for that reason, he's here tonight applying for the application. If it were to remain to, there are conditions that could be implemented that might make it possible if we did that. And the conditions are for outdoor storage primarily. And from, from pictures we've seen and from the discussion, the comments that people have made, that would be a very important factor if we went down that path. There is issues about corner visibility. And his plan, he showed where he plans to put a sign, plans to put a building, there may be things that have to be taken care of for corner visibility. So those are issues. So the resolution that, that we'll be looking at a little bit has some placement for additional conditions. So if we go there, we would have to fill that in as we work through it. The bottom line for me is the, the main criteria of protecting property values, that's been the testimony from the public tonight and the fifth of the neighborhood. So.
Okay? Thank you. I think for me, the, one of our highest obligations to the community is to protect property values and to make this beauty look like it should. And I think residents should, I think, I believe we should always understand the residents and when they buy property, that they can rely on the current zoning, that it won't change on them. And all of a sudden, you've got a McDonald's next door to your house, that type of thing. So, so I think, I think it's important that we be consistent. I'd like to change zoning without, especially when the community is against it. So for me, that's, that's my opinion. So. Any other comments? Okay. Okay. So at this point here, yeah, consider resolution H I C P C, R twenty-three dash zero zero eight, a resolution approving rezoning UBL three dash seven dash one from C two limited commercial district to C four commercial trades and services district.
So then how do we approach this decision?
The approaches were considered, so a motion needs to be made to approve it. A second needs to happen if we're going to consider it. And then we open it for discussion. When the discussion's closed, we call for both. In this case, it's a, we, we draft resolutions in the affirmative. So if it's approved, then we move forward with that. If it's disapproved, then the application is denied by disapproving this resolution.
But if we don't make a motion?
Should we have a motion?
May I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I think, so that we have clear direction. It was, it was decided when we put together planning and zoning regulations for the planning commission to make all of its decisions formally through resolution actions, not just a simply a vote or something from the minutes. So I think it's advised that we consider the resolution and take a vote on it so we have a clear decision of what the planning commission recommends.
I make a motion that we consider resolution H I C P C, R dash twenty-three dash oh oh eight.
So move, do I have a second? We call for discussion, we call for discussion, if you want to discuss. I think it's on first. We'll call for a vote. Commissioner Childers?
Voting against this resolution.
Yes. Voting nay?
Nay.
Commissioner Dumas, nay. Commissioner House?
Nay.
Commissioner Ralph?
Nay.
Commissioner Smith?
How?
Motion to, for a vote fails. Permit is not, or the rezoning is not permitted.
Thank you. Now we will deliberate on public hearing comments regarding a conditional use, or is that necessary?
Again, I think we need to make certain that the public knows what our decisions are. And there's comments that we did about it, the commissioners.
Deliberating on public hearing comments regarding conditional use of the C U A twenty-three zero eight zero eight filed by Justin Fray requesting a signature. A structure may be built on the property on the west corner of State Line Drive and Valley Drive, AKA one eighty-one State Line Drive, UBL three dash seven dash one to be used for boat, mechanical work and sales. Any comments? No comments?
My only comment is I don't believe the application was accurate enough to even go to the C two or to stay at C two and do what he wanted to. And I would like to ask him some questions about application for commercial use, but he left.
I do have some comments. And again, some of this is a little bit repetitive because these issues are mixed. So I have the same criteria listed in my, my comments that I've already covered, I won't do that again. And the purpose is the same. I want to point out because several, this discussion goes on in different circles, in different places about the impact of the declaration of reservations. This, what I have on screen comes from our planning and zoning regulations, it's in that first section. And it says, although, although these covenants are legal agreements between the unit property owners and are not binding upon the city. Declarations of reservations include similar name, use designations that differ from unit to unit. These regulations will strive to align with the declaration of reservations where applicable. The city has no enforcement capability on those declarations of reservations. Those are an agreement between the industrial property owners within the unit. And so if there's things in that agreement, when you bought your property, because that agreement runs up to land, it's in conflict with what's going on. Then later on, the bottom of that document shows that you have a recourse, you can take that individual to court and get a judge to cite some sort of resolution for you. The city can't defend those. In the work that we did in the zoning, a comment was made that there's only C one and C two, and I said, that's true. When I looked at all the different declarations of reservations and the different combinations and definitions, there were several that kind of crossed each other. And we did the best that we could in matching up what activities were permitted in that declaration of reservation with what we decided C one, two, three, and four would look like. So we made that determination when they're knowing that it's not perfect. And that things would change or maybe changed coming down the road. And so we would have an opportunity if someone wanted to do something different than what we set it up initially, and we have a public hearing about it. One of those things that happened several months ago, a declaration of reservation was made available to us that we didn't have at the time we did that. And it was clear that we had it wrong, so we changed that as a clerical change. Didn't need a public hearing on it, we just made it right. So as we move forward through this whole process, in years to come, as changes are being proposed, we need to consider that and give us a little bit of, not slack, but just give us an opportunity to fix it if we're raising an issue. The next thing I want to point out was in that particular unit, it says lots one through eight inclusive, or block seven, that's what we're talking about for this unit. This designated as a C one neighborhood commercial. And that property is outlined here. One of the things that's changed is those declarations were written back in nineteen seventy, I believe, at the top. Yeah, nineteen seventy, there was amendment in recent years, and that amendment was signed because they changed the minimum size of the house from, I think, twelve hundred to eighteen hundred, some number like that. That was the amendment. But this map was drawn by Mathis, Carter and Associates in twenty-ten. Look what happened. Lots four, five, six, and seven disappeared. Somebody changed that to lot forty-four. I haven't done the investigation of forty-four, it's been known there are storage units there. That's probably not commercial because the C one commercial is defined right here in that same covenant. The storage units are not on that list. Okay? So there's all kinds of issues with the declarations of reservations and what's happened since. The city's trying to make certain that we have things in place, make sure that there's some control. There is a ability for the public to know what's going on in their neighborhood, that's why I have public hearings. So, you know, that's why we're here tonight to go through this. Just want to point out that the declaration of reservations doesn't have impact on the city other than giving us guidance when we set up the zoning initially. Okay? So we defined those C twos and C fours, we talked about that several times tonight. We talked about the, the permitted and not permitted sections. And the definitions that go with those titles. The outdoor storage, and I had that prepared in case we discussed about C two fitting. And we're still at that point. If, you know, we have that decision to make, whether we zone it or as we give a conditional use permit for a C two or a C four for our visibility. Okay, I want to point this out because it's, it's part of my reason for denying what we just did in the rezoning. This land around this property has some value. I took these values from the county tax records. Their valuations, they're not necessarily the retail and the sale, but in the county tax records, it says they, those lots, one hundred and forty-four of them, within a thousand feet of that property are worth three or four point five million dollars. In that group of one hundred and forty-four, there are twenty-one lots that are improved, that have houses on them. That represents three point four billion dollars of property. And from those statements that we found on the, the research done by realtors and different universities, the National Association of Realtors says it'll decrease the value of those properties in the range of ten percent. So each property could be reduced in value of sixteen thousand dollars of these improvements. For overall, thirty-four hundred dollars, if you look at all one hundred and forty-four. That's that thousand foot range that was mentioned several times in those documents. In a closer neighborhood of five hundred feet, there are eight improved properties out of fifty-five, whom I did my circle, picked fifty-five. And that represents one, one point eight million dollars of property. And those eight properties represent seventy-nine percent of total of one point four million dollars. In this calculation, in the closer neighborhood, it would reduce those if a ten percent was applied to seventeen thousand three thirty-six. And all those properties combined, then their average would be a thirty-five hundred dollar reduction. So the study's not our opinion, not my opinion, but the opinions of the National Association of Realtors, University of Arkansas, the University of California, Berkeley, the Florida Atlantic University. Those are the four that I studied, say the property values are going to be decreased, diminished because of this kind of business in this near neighborhood. Okay, my comments.
Thank you, Lynn. Once again, I, I feel like we should always, as commissioners, we should help our citizens first. And if they rely on the zoning, when they buy into it, we should, we should support that. And so that goes for future applications to us. I will consider them. I think this whole committee will consider them. But it's, it's going to be a push, generally. I, I too am disturbed by the fact that this particular application was not encompassing everything it needed vicious for this business. And that's, that's a, that's a no starter for me also. Any other comments? And we'll, we'll, we'll pursue a resolution, H I C P C twenty-three, R, excuse me, R twenty-three dash zero zero nine, a resolution approving conditional use permits, C U P twenty-three zero eight zero eight, requesting the use of UBL three dash seven dash one for mechanical work and sales.
I make a motion that we consider resolution R twenty-three zero zero nine considering conditional use permit.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second? Second and Doug. And we'll call the roll.
Mamet Hunt?
Yes.
Okay. I drafted this document so that it was subject to revision deliberations, so if we went down the path, you know, we had conditions that need to be filled in. So as it's drafted, that's what we're considering, that was the motion, we didn't add anything to it. Not necessarily saying we have to, but there's enough here that, it's talking about approval, it's about the possibility of notice, not to be, to be used for that. No building should be, building permit issued, substantial work as we know within a period of time. So there's enough meat here that I think it's okay that we go with it.
No, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Childers?
Nay.
Commissioner House?
Nay.
Commissioner Ralph?
Nay.
Commissioner Smith?
How?
Commissioner Dumas, nay. Call no, tails. Yeah, we have some other business to, to take care of. And I didn't bring that document over right away. I'll be over there real quick.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
Maybe you might ask for, to rezonate, I mean, do you hear that in like a decision yourself sometimes, or do you always call for a vote on it in that public hearing?
Rezoning applications require a public hearing and then the discussion, then we would have to, to approve it. If, if the planning commission approves rezoning, the next step is it goes to the city attorney to write the proper legal document. And then the city, the city attorney drafts an ordinance that the city council must approve. So it's a two-step process for rezoning.
So, so you wouldn't just turn it down without a public meeting?
Correct. We will always have a public hearing for rezoning.
That's what I wasn't sure about. Thank you for clarifying.
Mayor told me that it doesn't matter whether it's one property or whether somebody is asking to develop five thousand properties, you have to have a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Nice job, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we're going to discuss a proposed change to our zoning regulations by adding a new zoning district. Is zoning changed, yes. Or not zoning, regulation changes?
Okay, the next subject is deficient properties. We're going to discuss that.
Yeah, I have the text up on the screen. Proposed amendments to the planning and zoning regulations. There's an issue that may come up in the future that we cannot find a zoning that we can apply to this property that may be set aside. There's been some discussion about subdividing the property. And the lot that will be created isn't definable by our current regulations. So I studied the subject and did a lot of research on illegal websites and some other cities to see what to call it, I picked deficient, so that name is to be changed. It would require change in Section 602 by striking the "and" and adding the DP to it, because this section talks about restriction, the hierarchy, if you're going to have one zone of residential next to something else, and it just simply excludes that from that group. And I created this general description of, for deficient property.
Did you just read before that?
Sure. Deficient property has characteristics that do not permit another zoning classification, including but not limited to any of the following conditions. Insufficient size, unusual configuration, lack of both water and sewer service availability or extreme topography. A, insufficient size is determined by Section 701, 702, 720. B, unusual configuration that limits construction of residential, commercial, or incidental use structure in a zoning district's setbacks and minimums. C, lack of water and sewer lines along the property line or opposite side of an adjoining roadway. D, extreme topography as defined by grades exceeding 30% on uplots or exceeding 40% on downlots as measured at a 30-foot, measured at 30 feet from the frontage property line. And I drew a little sketch to illustrate that text. So.
I have a question.
Okay.
Can you give me an example of where some of these deficient properties are?
Well, let's say, for instance, a Hyacinth property that might be shaped like a banana wrapping around other lots. And if someone, if Hyacinth wanted to break that property into a piece, then it would be way too narrow to build anything on it and use it, so you can't make it residential or commercial or industrial. That's the main, that's the easiest one to say, it's just not configured, you can't use it for any purpose. There may be lots in Holiday Island that are too steep, either on the uplot or downlot. In the research I did, it talked about architecture and building. Anything over 15% was considered difficult. 20% grades were listed as very steep, and above 20%, they were extreme. So I picked 30% and 40% to be outside of that even what they are talking about. So if we have a really extreme lot, and I think there are, right along the road, I belong on part of that road, looks down, it drops more than 12 feet, 30 feet from the road, that might be a deficient lot. And for some reason, someone may want to have it zoned for that.
And you work with it?
Well, that's just it. The uses is the next section. No commercial use are allowed. No residential uses are allowed. No structures of any kind are allowed. No storage of materials, boats, trailers, equipment, or vehicles is allowed. Development of the lot is limited to an entrance to the lot over an approved culvert if deemed necessary by Hyacinth, and maintained vehicle pathway through the lot with optional fencing as permitted in Section 2106 A through E that may be constructed along a 25-foot setback from the back property line. Development described in Section 713 requires a building permit at zero cost and may be, and must, may be approved by the city building inspector. So there may be a lot created that's used to access some other property. So this could be maybe a driveway.
Explain the part to me about maybe it's been along a 20-foot setback from the back property line.
I wrote that in there with the thought, we don't want to see a fence along the street or on the side of this deficient property, only across the back. So if there was a driveway there, they might be inclined to put a gate in it. But I left the 25-foot setback in it, because all of our, not all, but most of our lots have that requirement.
Oh, okay.
And that allows access for utilities and other purposes in that setback area, in that easement area.
So that's common, too?
Yeah, it's typical in the rest of our lots, a 25-foot setback in the rear of a lot. And the development of the fencing, it talks about what kind of fencing is permitted. You can't just barbed wire, that kind of thing.
So you say commercials could, commercial use could not be implemented onto this?
Right.
I mean, say somebody came in and said they wanted to put in a bike trail, you know, mountain bike trail through it or something like that.
That would be in this, that would be, I think, covered by this development of the
of a lot.
Maintain, as maintained vehicle pathway.
Yeah. Or want to do zip lining or something like that.
I don't have zip lining covered, but we could, we could put that in here. No construction of any kind, and then you're not going to put a, up in the ground and put a wire on it. We could add that to the steps.
I'm just curious. I was trying to think of the types of uses you would use for a mountain bike.
I think we ought to, we ought to make it as tight as we can, because the idea is that these are basically lots that only can be used to put a driveway in, to go somewhere else.
Sure. Is this a strong statement, development of the lot is limited to? And then describes exactly what it is? So I can't put a foundation to pull, to apply on it?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Again, this is my draft. I do this, this is the history of the planning commission. I draft the text or other people do, and we consider it, modify it, change it, wrap it around. And then this last is just a change, because we had 12 and 13, I had to change this next bullet. That's the proposed changes.
I can't help myself. Can I, can I make a comment?
Certainly, please do.
We like listening to the mayor's opinions.
You knew I couldn't sit there all.
State your name.
State your name, yes.
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor Keyes?
Yes.
Another potential use for this classification is, at one time in Holiday Island, there were hundreds of lots that were strictly membership lots. You knew you couldn't build on it, but you bought it so that you could use the swimming pool and play golf. At some point, you know, I guess because of, you know, opportunity to make some money, a lot of those lots were put back into circulation, and on paper, they looked the same as any other lot. You know, we know that we've had a problem in Holiday Island with the turnback lots and down at the state commissioner lands. Land speculators from all over the world pick them up for 50 bucks apiece and put them out on eBay and sell them for $5,000 to unsuspecting people in California or wherever. And then they come out here to look at their lot and find out that it's worthless. It's totally worthless. You know, it would probably be beneficial, and I don't know how we'd ever accomplish it, but it would probably be beneficial to the community long-term to find those lots, you know, and zone them as being deficient so that if somebody tries to buy it and they check the zoning on it before they buy it, they would see that it's not a, it's not something that's going to benefit them. I think that that is maybe the biggest opportunity to use that zoning classification.
Well, we hope we solve the turnback. But that's definitely a good use for it, yes.
But one thing I would say, Mr. Mayor, is there's been a lot of lots I've seen where I didn't think they were worthy of putting a house on it. Somebody put poles on it and still made it, made it a home.
Do you have that money?
If you got that money.
If you drive, drive on a hot drive, there's, there's lots where it goes straight up 50 feet. I mean, it's a lot, it's just solid rock. There is no way you could ever, I mean, you'd have to blast for six months to carve a hole and build something.
So my point is, who is, who's going to determine whether the deficient?
I don't know. That's why.
Because I can consider a whole lot of them that aren't deficient.
I've seen houses built, you know, three to 10-foot pillars, getting it up 30 feet, then they pour the concrete, just, I'm not around here, but.
So if we zone them as deficient properties, and then somebody does build on it, what do we do with that?
It'd be rezoned, we'd have a public hearing and change it to R1 or 2, whatever they want for. Approve that change, then they would be approved, then they get a building permit, if their building plans were adequate. You know, in my research, looking at this, I saw lots of properties, you could build anything on anywhere if you had enough money.
If you had the money.
If you're in Saudi Arabia, you could build in the ocean. You know, if you pour enough sand, you could create an island.
If they do.
So I saw lots of pictures and sketches and floor plans of 45-degree angles and properties run, but it was just, you know, stair steps on the top.
So continuing with the mayor's suggestion, we try to define these properties. We buy these properties, we mark them as deficient properties, and then we see what happens down the road, and we can adjust accordingly.
Well, first step is we just need to develop, say that we think that this is an appropriate zoning descriptor, and then pass it on to the city council.
Just leave it.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking the same thing you're talking about, actually. The house up in my neighborhood, at the top of state line, at Holiday Island, Table Rock Drive, that house looks like it's on a deficient property lot to me. I was just wondering, Lynn, would that one qualify?
Someone would have to measure it for me, you know, certainly, or we'd have to give us the elevation change.
Oh, it also, it has to, it has to have all the characteristics, you're telling me.
I don't, was the lot large enough to be built on, probably?
Probably.
Was it?
It had water and sewer.
It had water and sewer.
The grade is what I was wondering.
Disqualifier or a qualification to match it.
Yeah, I would think that might qualify. But actually, and this is what, the point I was going to make, was we have a tremendous number, as Dan said, of these properties that sit on ridge lines. And they just go on both sides. And, you know, and I'm sure a good number of them have already been bought, too, that are already in the hands of people. So would you zone it DP if it's in the hands of a person or if it's not in the hands of a person?
I think you'd have to go through.
I'm just suggesting that that might be a use for that designation.
I think anything that's an R1 now, whether it's a ridge line or not, stays that way and.
Well, all these are R1.
Yeah.
My opinion.
I think this is something that seldom going to be used in the current.
Well, Dan was suggesting rezoning, I think Dan was suggesting rezoning from R1 to DP. But I guess I was wondering, would you rezone all the ones that are already owned or just the ones that weren't owned, just the ones that were in Hyacinth's hands? So that was my question.
As a planning commissioner, I would resist that, because if I had an R1 lot, bought it with R1 understanding, and then someone comes along and tells me it's not viable, it's DP, you're going to be losing their value, and that's not a smart move.
That's true.
Right. If someone applies for it for their purposes, we investigate it with a survey of the elevation changes and be able to say, yeah, it fits or it doesn't.
So when would you use DP?
This is mainly for, Hyacinth has a lot or two that needs to have this happen.
The issue, the issue is Hyacinth's working on the need to have a lot like this. A lot of this kind of designation. They're considering subdividing a parcel.
We have to provide access to a closed parcel of property. And so if we can do it this way, and we can change it to a lot, put a road through it, and get an assessment out of it, that we're not getting before.
Could you, I don't know if this is applicable anymore, but a lot of those lots that Hyacinth owns, I think they pay property tax.
So not anymore?
Not anymore.
Not anymore, that's settled. That's why they won't be going to the state anymore.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Alex Therosi, 158 Holiday Island Drive. Something that I've mentioned before, it's been a while, that I mentioned to the commissioners of the CID, has to do with that map that I did a long time ago, where I classified with colors all the status of all the lots. And I think a lot of you remember that I stated that I found out when I did that map, 42% of the properties at Holiday Island are owned by people who don't live here. Two things about that, and I mentioned this before. They've never been notified about incorporation. So they're paying their assessments to the CID. And one of these days, the city's going to hit them with a real estate tax, stop what they're already paying for the CID. And I suspect that a lot of these people that own these properties that don't live here, maybe haven't even been here in years, will get that notification of paying a second property tax. You're going to get a lot of quick claim deeds. And now you're saying, if we're going to classify, most of those, a lot of those properties are probably would be considered deficient. If they get that notification, too, to say, guess what? On top of your owning this property, and all you can do is pay on it, you're never going to be able to build on it or sell it to somebody thinking they could build on it. It would be a double whammy. I think even more people will get rid of their properties, they'll get rid of their lots. Because a lot of them were purchased years ago by mom and dad or grandpa or something when this thing started. The kids are living elsewhere, they'll never come here. And you could talk to the district manager, he's got an awful lot of quick claim deeds in the last couple of years for that, for that reason. So just something to think about.
Thank you. Okay. Any more suggestions for this text?
Looks good to me.
Okay, so the next step of this text, then I'll put it into the form of a resolution that we'll consider at the next regular meeting, so we can recommend it to the city for adoption. It'll happen in October.
We have any official comments?
I just want to say thanks, guys, for stepping up.
Hey, listen. Anybody can put together an 85-page document for us to look at, try.
I only did 42 pages, the rest came from another individual, but anyway.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
Okay, for scheduling, our next regular meeting will be a public hearing on October 10th, 2023, at 6:00 PM. Regular meeting following the conclusion of the public hearing.
The reason we're having the public hearing is there's a, a conditional use permit has been filed, and I'm starting the paperwork on that, for a property on Holiday Island Drive is applied for short-term rental. So it'll be our first experience with that for not only us, but for the city. So I've had some email exchanges with the mayor, but we need some guidance in that, because it's a conditional use permit, and there'll be conditions that we need to articulate to the property owner before we can permit them to do that.
And you're going to research that, right?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
And so I'll have that to, I'm hoping we have it together in the next couple of weeks, because we have a 15-day notice timeframe before the meeting for newspaper. And I'd like to have all that prepared for the website before that 15-day period ends. So maybe the city council can work on that at their next meeting next week?
Maybe.
Maybe.
I think that concludes our business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. A second? This meeting is adjourned.
Well, you didn't call that one. You said a motion and a second.
You said a motion and a second.
You're right.
You can't adjourn without a vote.
It was really funny though, like during the first one, we found, oh, you can't adjourn. I was like, don't do it that way.
I think, I think you do it, I think you do end a public hearing that way.
Do you just stop?
Yeah, you don't vote on anything.